I don't want your job and I'm grateful that you do it. So bow your heads and let's pray together. Heavenly Father, I ask for your wisdom and your synergy to work among us and between our council members and staff this evening. I ask that you bless them, bless their families, provide for their families, give them insight this evening and every day as they serve us, and may you bountifully provide for them and each member of our community, we pray. May your kingdom come and your will be done in Oceanside as it is in heaven. And everybody agreed and said, amen. God bless you all.
Great. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by ROPD Explorer.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all. Thank you.
And I'd like to invite Homer Post and whomever's coming with him to come on up for a proclamation for Parks Make Life Better Month. Just one? Just Patrick?
Especially Ben. Good evening. Boy, this is a real live crowd here. I'm telling you. Well, for all of you that are not aware of what next month will provide us with, it's called Parks Make Life Better. In keeping with the City of Oceanside's general plan, goal number one, community enrichment, parks make life better by providing a consistent, significant, long-term preservation and improvement of the environment, the values, the aesthetics, the character, the image of Oceanside as a safe, attractive, desirable, and well-balanced community. Parks make life better. For you, the biggest benefit is parks are a safe outdoor space. Our kids today will grow up in these parks. Nature, beautiful nature, with respect to serenity and nature are probably one of the greatest values that you will receive at a park. Being in nature makes you feel alive. I feel lucky to have a beautiful, serene place so close to my home. I want my grandchildren to have the same appreciation for parks. Exercise, health, movement. Parks are made for moving at your own pace. Our families walk, play, and cycle. The recreation programs make it easy to stay healthy. Positive space, free time. My neighborhood is more than just a place to chill. It keeps me thinking straight and always out of trouble. It's free and it's a real place of fun. Positive space, gathering place, socializing and learning. Parks are like a holiday, or holidays. It brings us together to share good times. They're our common ground that connects us all. It's a gathering place for every value today and always, parks enrich life. They add value, now listen to this, they add value to your homes and neighborhoods. Individually and as a community, we're always in need of parks. Forever, forever, forever. Thank you.
Thank you. And now if I could have the representatives from the Alzheimer's Association and Silverado Escondido to come forward for a joint proclamation for Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month.
Can I let me start? This is all new to me, so. My name is Serena Reed and I live in the City of Oceanside and I'm here representing the Alzheimer's Association. Just a couple of things. It is, it used to be every 66 seconds someone was diagnosed with Alzheimer's. Now it is every 65 seconds and that risk rate just changed this year. By mid-century, it'll be down to just about every 33 seconds somebody will be diagnosed with Alzheimer's. So get involved if you can, either with helping caregivers, helping someone who has Alzheimer's, and know the 10 signs. Just go to the Alzheimer's Association website and it'll give you all of that information. Tomorrow is June 21st and it's the longest day and the Alzheimer's Association has an initiative that is called the Longest Day and you could get involved that way as well. You can find an activity that a loved one who had Alzheimer's used to like to do and maybe get involved in that and use that as a format or a platform to bring awareness to Alzheimer's and also to advocate for Alzheimer's. And with that, I'll pass the mic on.
Hi, I'm Jolene Farris and I'm with Silverado. We're assisted living for the memory impaired, but I first just wanted to start and really thank Peter Weiss, Mayor of Oceanside, for really acknowledging and understanding how much of an impact Alzheimer's has on our community at large, really financially, but even more so emotionally for, you know, many individuals who have Alzheimer's or memory impairing diseases. So we're excited, you know, to accept this proclamation alongside the Alzheimer's Association, whom we've partnered with for many years. In fact, last week, Rick Topetti, my family ambassador, he actually did a virtual dementia training with the Alzheimer's Association at their support group for family members and individuals who have loved ones with Alzheimer's. But just really briefly, Silverado, we are an assisted living, like I mentioned, for the memory impaired and we have a couple communities. We have one in Escondido and one in Encinitas. We actually have several communities, but two in the San Diego County. And we know that not everyone, all of, I'm sure some of you in here know someone or have a loved one with Alzheimer's. And many feel uncomfortable or scared or have feelings of guilt of moving their loved one into a community. So Silverado, we have a continuum of care, so many people can stay home for a period of time, so we have in-home care and we also have hospice for when that time is needed. But really, the mission of Silverado is to enrich the lives of those with memory impairments. We think outside of the box. You'll hear in our communities, we operate from love rather than fear, and that might sound funny, a company's talking about coming from love rather than fear, but we do. Many assisted livings, and I'm not putting any down by any means, operate from fear for rightfully so, fear of falls or people wandering with Alzheimer's. But at Silverado, we don't lock our doors. We are gated all around and we're secure at the front, but if a resident with memory impairments hits a locked door, more than likely you're going to see increased agitation, behaviors that occur, and frustration, so we believe in, let's open our doors, let's treat our residents with dignity and respect and foster that independence. So we kind of, we're very innovative and think outside the box. But we are not only an assisted living, we pride ourselves on being your memory care resource, so we're here just to let all of you know, we want to help you all, educate, support you, and be a resource to you. So I don't want you to think you have to move your loved one, we're here, like the Alzheimer's Association, to educate and support you through this process because we know it's very difficult. And I just, we don't want to take up too much time, but I really quickly want to talk to you about what we do at a community at large as far as education goes, and Rick's going to briefly go over that.
Very briefly, hi everybody, my name is Rick Topetti and honored to be here again. Thank you so much, Peter, to the Alzheimer's Association, it's such a great honor. We did the training last week and to all of you, I think it truly represents in the community, it takes a village to do what we all do, and for myself and the community, it's about outreach, it's about enriching lives, and we do it various ways through our different educations to support families, we lead support groups, we do, as Jolene mentioned, the virtual dementia training, which we have for families that are dealing with a dementia diagnosis and really trying to understand how they can interact with their loved one, we do it with our hospitals and case managers. So for my job and focus is to really continue to create and build that relationship out here because we're all six degrees of separation from a grandmother to an aunt. I had an aunt that was diagnosed a few years ago and I can only say this, we will continue to do what we do passionately, supporting our community, supporting Oceanside, supporting the Alzheimer's Association. We were honored last week to actually put police officers through local in the community in Escondido, we're certainly going to look to do it here, we've done first responders to help them in dealing with this disease. Again, it takes a village for all of us to work together, but ultimately in serving these families, it's about celebrating their abilities and not focusing on limitations. We will continue our focus forward, so thank you so much humbly. God bless.
Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. The city council met in closed session to discuss the following items. Item one on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator involving the status of negotiations with the Oceanside Fire Association, Oceanside Fire Management Association, the management employees of the City of Oceanside, and the Western Council of Engineers. Council also met on item two, conference with real estate negotiator involving a portion of Ivy Ranch Park, APN number 15859104, negotiating parties, City of Oceanside and Ivy Ranch Park Association, under negotiations, price and terms for the use of the real property. Both items one and two were discussed, there is no action under the Brown Act to report on either of those items.
Thank you.
Next we have the consent calendar, which is items four through 11. Item number 12 has been removed from the consent calendar by staff, and then item number 40 has been pulled for discussion by the public.
Move approval for balance.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, five zero. Honorable Mayor, City Council, item number 40 is adoption of three resolutions related to the Oceanside General Municipal Election, calling and giving notice of the General Municipal Election to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, for the election of one council member to represent District One, one council member to represent District Two, the city treasurer, and two measures, the SOAR initiative and the half-cent sales tax. Requesting the San Diego County Board of Supervisors to consolidate the General Municipal Election with the statewide general election to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018 pursuant to Section 10403 of the Election Code, and adopting regulations for candidates for elective office pertaining to materials submitted to the electorate and the cost thereof to the General Municipal Election. Now we have one member of the public wishing to speak on this item, Steve Hasty. Oh yeah, Mr. Hasty.
Hi, my name is Steve Hasty, I'm a resident here of Oceanside, here to speak on the issue of the half-cent sales tax increase. Just to say that the sales tax that we already collect from the city-
This is not that item, this item is on the district elections.
This item includes-
It includes it.
This includes the half-cent sales tax.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, this is-
Item number 51 is the second read, but this item includes two measures, the half-cent sales tax as well as the SOAR initiative.
Yes, sir. May I proceed?
I guess we should have done the other one first.
Go ahead.
My point is that with the sales tax that the city already collects, it's very disheartening to see that put out there that we need to increase our sales tax for basic services like police, fire, parks, and potholes. This tells me that the amount of money that the city already collects every year, if it's not already been set aside for these services, has been mismanaged. It's my opinion as a taxpayer in the city that we do not need to raise our sales taxes and any council member that's suggesting that we do should please not seek any reelection as it's proving that we've mismanaged the funds that we already have. When we have council members like Chuck Lowery who's accepted $250,000 from the firefighters' union, and then that money is being asked for the sales tax increase, really is about unfunded pensions, it's really hard to accept that that's the real issue that we need to address. Cutting spending is much better than raising taxes. It's not good for our city, it's not good for our citizens to have the council keep coming back and putting their hand out to raise more money for unfunded unsustainable pensions. The fact that the council has already voted in last year to double the parking fees because it was a failure to set aside funds for pier maintenance or beach maintenance is again disheartening that we're not managing the funds properly for basic services, that we, the city keeps coming and putting their hands out and asking for more money. If the problem is that we don't have enough money to fund the unfunded pensions, then that should be the issue. We should have that be the issue and not that we need more money for basic services provided to our city. It shows an inherent mismanagement of funds and is a slap in the face to the citizens here in Oceanside.
No further public on this item.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, five zero. Next we have item number 41, which is adoption of resolution to initiate a jurisdictional basin boundary modification with the California Department of Water Resources for the San Luis Rey Valley Basin in coordination with basin stakeholders.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members, Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director, and I'm here to speak regarding item 41, which is a boundary modification request. Staff's recommendation this evening is that council adopt a resolution to initiate a jurisdictional basin boundary modification request with the California Department of Water Resources. This action is being proposed to comply with a 2014 state law called the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or SIGMA, which established structures for managing groundwater basins in California. It's implemented by establishing groundwater sustainability agencies to manage basins and also preparing groundwater sustainability plans. When basins are designated as a medium priority basin in the state, it means that they must comply with these regulations, and the San Luis Rey Valley Groundwater Basin, which covers not only the Mission Basin, the Bonzal Basin, and the Upper Basin in the watershed, has been designated as its medium priority and must comply with the regulation. You may recall that two years ago, we were also before you, asking for a basin boundary modification request at Frye Creek, which is east of the 15 freeway, that was filed with the Department of Water Resources, and before it was adopted by the California Water Commission, it was rejected because the tribes opposed the measure quite strongly. They had a federal water rights case and this particular action was in, was at odds with their settlement. Since that time and for about two years, staff has been working with water districts that are stakeholders in the basin, as well as with the tribal entities and in particular with their attorneys, to develop an approach that we believe will address the issues that the tribes have with the basin, as well as, as the management of the Mission Basin that Oceanside sees. Those two actions include a legislative fix in the form of AB 1944, that's currently being considered at the state level, it's moving forward with not a lot of opposition, and there should be some decision at the state level by the end of September on that. But staff is putting forward this basin boundary modification request as a belt and suspenders approach to managing the basin in the event that the legislation does not move forward. When we submit the basin boundary modification request, we need to have stakeholders' support and we've requested that those stakeholders provide letters of support. We've seen, we've received several, both in support and in opposition. Those in opposition include the City of Carlsbad, as well as the San Luis Rey Water District, and it does require 75% of those stakeholders supporting the action in order for DWR to recommend it to move forward. Both of the options, the legislative fix, as well as this boundary modification request before you divide the basin at the same dividing point. So if the legislation did move forward, the city would request that the boundary modification would be withdrawn. We did hear from DWR today that the timeline to submit the basin boundary modification has been moved from June 30th to July 31st, I just heard that a couple hours ago, so we do have a little bit more time, but there's no fiscal impact with this particular action. This recommended, recommendation slide summarizes staff's recommended action and I will be available for questions, should you have any.
No public on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I'm really happy that staff was able to have these meetings with the tribes and, and the Indian Water Authority and there was a solution. Obviously, we need to protect our groundwater, it's got to be able to be used by us, for us, for our citizens, for the next, I don't know, 50 years and beyond, so it's extremely important not to, to protect it, to make sure that there is, that what happened in the Delta doesn't happen here, all the protections that it needs, and as well as protecting the water rights of the tribes, so I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller?
I only had a question, Carrie, about what, what was Carlsbad's complaint? Carrie? Carrie?
And may, Honorable Mayor and council members, perhaps the city attorney would like to weigh in on this because it does-
Carlsbad has a pending lawsuit involving their water rights in the basin that actually they lost at the trial court, the case is on appeal, our water rights council's handling that, and I think they contend that, or they just want to make sure that nothing that's done with this request is going to adversely affect their rights. The bill actually, AB 1944, protects those rights, and so this really should have nothing to do with the claims made by Carlsbad, however meritless they may be.
Please vote.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Sanchez, your vote didn't come up, I'm so sorry. Can we please do that again? Ms. Sanchez's vote didn't pop up. Yeah. Yes, just to make sure it reflects everyone's vote. Deputy Mayor Larry, thank you. Motion approved, five zero. Next is item number 42, introduction and ordinance, amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter Seven, Article 12, to require that business establishments with five or more shopping carts enter into an agreement with a shopping cart retrieval service or implement a shopping cart containment plan and provide proof to the city as part of the application to obtain or renew a business license.
Honorable Mayor, council members, my name is Kirk Munt, I'm the code enforcement manager for the City of Oceanside, tonight here to introduce ordinance regarding shopping cart containment and retrieval. The synopsis of our proposed ordinance requires containment system or retrieval service to proactively manage shopping carts. This containment service or containment system or retrieval service will be linked to the business license renewal to ensure that it remains active and will be reviewed annually to ensure that it does remain active the entire time. Currently, we've got some services that have been discontinued and are used temporarily and not continuously. The new ordinance also incorporates an appeal process and a provisional business license if needed for businesses that don't necessarily comply, so that we don't stop their business from operating under a license. Our existing ordinance in comparison requires the city to collect 10 shopping carts in a one-week period before additional containment or retrieval measures can be required. There's no requirement to take preventative or proactive containment or retrieval measures. And as we all know, stolen carts and abandoned carts often obstruct public right of ways and cause blight. As some background, over a recent three-week period, the police department collected over 470 carts in that period. This is a picture of a far smaller number, but it was a large number of carts that have been, majority have been since returned to the stores. Analysis and fiscal impact, requiring proactive cart management will reduce calls for service for shopping carts. There will be a minor administrative burden on the financial services department when renewing business licenses and to ensure that those cart containment plans or retrieval services are active. Ultimately though, we anticipate a reduction in misuse, misplaced, and stolen shopping carts, which will benefit the businesses as well as the community. There's a picture of a shopping cart in a traffic lane. The staff recommends the city council introduce ordinance, amending Chapter Seven, Article 12, requiring the shopping cart retrieval service or containment plan. And I'm available for any questions if there are any.
No public on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Thank you, certainly this is a problem that we have and we certainly get a lot of calls and code enforcement is, is really, really busy on these, as well as police department, so this basically shifts the responsibility to the business owners and hopefully this will really address that issue. So I'm going to go ahead and move that we, move, move that we go forward on the introduction of the ordinance.
Councilmember Kern?
There we are. I'll second the motion, I know behind your office, there's, seems like, there's always 20 or 30 out there behind the book room every week and to do that. And these things aren't cheap, are they? I mean, they're, what's the cost to the store?
I recently spoke, recently spoke with the shopping cart retrieval service.
There we go.
What about I do the same thing?
Okay. Recently spoke with the shopping cart retrieval service and asked them the cost of carts, it depends on where they're manufactured and what they're made of, but typically they said $125 to $300 for the higher-end carts. So we anticipate that it will actually, although there is a cost for the service, in the, in the long run, it'll probably benefit the businesses too because they won't have missing carts.
I would think they'd want to get their, you know, $200 cart back to do, and then keep them off the street, so I'm very supportive of this.
Councilmember Feller?
Thanks. Who, the 470 carts, and you said most of them have been returned, how, who paid for that?
Well, we contacted, the police department picked them up in a pickup truck, cited people when applicable for-
people when applicable for removing those carts. We contacted, the code enforcement office contacted the businesses, inventoried the carts and then contacted all of those businesses that had carts there to ensure their removal. Either the stores picked them up or a third-party contractor, for those that had a retrieval service, picked them up from our, our property.
Very good. It was bad enough that we had to spend four, police officers' time doing that. Will there be enforcement such as removing carts from illegal possession?
There is an enforcement provision in the ordinance that allows for citation for people who have carts without permission.
Do we take the cart?
We take the cart and if there's personal property that they can carry, we've, can supply them with bags or whatnot to remove that, that property.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullin.
Okay, this is the introduction of an ordinance of the city of Oceanside amending Chapter Seven, Article 12 of the Oceanside City Code to require that businesses submit proof of a shopping cart containment plan or cart retrieval service contract annually.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
We'll go to 51 next, please.
Yes, item number 51. One moment. I remember 51.
I got it, Zach.
Thanks, John.
Item 51 is a adoption of an ordinance of the city of Oceanside adding Chapter 34, Article Two, Sections 34.6.1 through 34.6.17 to the Oceanside City Code to establish a temporary one-half cent general transactions and use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, including provisions for citizens' oversight and accountability.
We're one speaker on this item. Steve Hasty.
You can speak twice.
Once again, Steve Hasty, city of Oceanside resident. I can't believe I'm the only person in the room speaking on this half-cent sales tax. I understand the last time this was on the agenda, we had about 47 people speaking and I understand now one person spoke against it. Again, looking at the half-cent sales tax increase request, to me signifies a failure of those in charge of spending funding, funds from our city, from the sales tax already being collected, when you see the reports saying that this money is needed for basic services. It appalls me that our basic services of police, fire, parks and potholes aren't already being covered by the money being collected from the taxes already from folks in our city. With almost 180,000 residents in our city, it seems like this money for basic services should already be the first priority in the budget and anything beyond the basic services is what we should be looking at for cutting. In the research, looking at the amount of money that goes towards pensions has been really the culprit in our budget. Unfortunately, we've not addressed that issue. The issue of addressing spending cuts should be the priority of the folks in charge of spending the funds collected by our city versus simply asking for more money when it appears that we've run out of funds. As a private citizen here in Oceanside, again, it's just very appalling that the city is asking to increase these funds. They're claiming it's gonna be a seven-year temporary sunset, but I have yet to see one city ever back out of a tax that was temporarily set into motion. This is the reason why our city needs term limits to employ new, fresh ideas on how to properly manage the funds to our city. That's a separate issue, but it is related. And when we have councilmembers sitting at this very table that receive over $250,000 from the firefighters' union to guarantee a 6% annual increase in those pensions, far well and above anyone sitting in this audience. Those pensions are not designed to be a lottery for people who serve our city under the auspice of public service. We have people receiving pension payments of over $10,000 a month, more money than they ever made while they were on the job. Because of this 6% annual increase, it keeps being perpetuated in our contracts for public services. We should look at cutting those increases to the cost of living increase around 3% versus the exorbitant amount that's currently in place. Cutting spending is always a better choice than raising taxes. Thank you.
No further public on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Thank you. We've had a very difficult time at our city. When the recession came, we had to actually let 100 people go. Really good employees, but we did what we had to do. And with all due respect and apologies to those employees, we never got those employees back, never able to do that. The funds that are, that, in terms of the presentation that was made, the funds are specifically, in terms of our interests, are for, is for infrastructure, things that we have been putting off for years, has really very little to do with the operations of the city. We ha, we need to do infrastructure improvements if we are gonna be able to provide the same level of service as we go forward. The, this, this includes quality of life issues, possibly even the swimming pool may, to, to go forward. So I'm gonna go ahead and move adoption of the ordinance. Thank you.
I'll second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Kern, no.
Let's go to 48.
Yes, item number 48, or request to speak off the agenda, one moment. First, we have Kathy Nykel, followed by Stephen Makeoff. Is Kathy Nykel here? Oh, okay, great.
I just wanna make sure you called me. Stephen, Stephen Makeoff?
Go ahead, let.
Yeah, go for it, Mr. Makeoff.
Thank you. My name is Steve Makeoff. I'm a board member of the KIM Center for Social Balance. I'm here today to introduce you to the KIM Center and inspire, hopefully, your support. Our goal is to create gender equity in the workplace by educating and galvanizing communities around measurable actions that address the discrimination obstructing women's success. Workplace gender equity is about economics and social prosperity for women and men and children. Research shows that San Diego County's productivity could increase by $23 billion in 10 years. Every growing industry from biotech to environmental conservation could benefit financially and strategically. And the military also stands to gain, since many service members consider leaving the service because of the employment challenges their wives face as primary parents. Furthermore, we could get ahead of several prevalent social issues, including homelessness and domestic violence. The KIM Center is implementing five strategies to achieve countywide workplace gender equity. One, our Gender Equity Collaborative, which is a network including businesses, governments and individual leaders. Two, an online information center. Three, research to provide benchmarks and metrics for the county. Four, consultant service to help companies and agencies. And five, mentoring and internships for women and girls from under-resourced communities. I look forward to reaching out to each of you to share more about the KIM Center's mission and activities in hopes that we can all rally together to place San Diego County solidly at the national forefront of economic and social prosperity. Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Kathy Nykel.
I gotta put on my hat. Woo-hoo. Eha.
Kathy, I want this tie just for you.
I appreciate that. I think this is one of like 30 hats I have, so, and I downplayed it this year because we got our T-shirts early, so. Honorable councilmembers, staff, viewing public and those that are here in the council chambers, my name is Kathy Nykel from Main Street, Oceanside, and I'm gonna talk about our Independence Week. We, we start it next Thursday, the 28th. We try to get everybody in the mood and we red, white and blue our, our market that night. And then on the 30th of June, the parade is always held the Saturday prior to the 4th of July, we will be having it from 10 to noon. And this year, we are honoring former mayor Jim Wood as our grand marshal and our two hometown heroes that really gave a lot to Oceanside, both Eileen Turk, division manager from Parks and Recreation, and Dr. Dwayne Coleman, superintendent from Oceanside Unified School District. Right now, we're at 126 participating groups, which is a lot. We have, this year alone, the most military groups that we've ever had. We have eight active-duty groups and 12 veteran groups, so that's pretty fantastic. As in past, this is an all-American, red, white and blue parade. You can, you can see it anywhere in the U.S., but of course, ours is the best. And, and it, and it started the day after we became a city, so what else can you say? We have four marching bands, baton twirlers, vintage cars, scout groups, churches. We still need a few cars for this parade and a few more volunteers, so I'm looking for a couple of convertibles that can hold three. Let me know. But all the information about how to come and just watch the parade, or if you're participating, it's all on our website. We're as much red, white and blue as possible. We have several community groups who have assisted us this year again. Mosin provides all our snacks and water for volunteers and participating groups, flags from Friends of Oceanside Parks and Recreation. I could go on and on and on. So this is a true community parade. Right after the parade, the Veterans Center of North County will be having, again, their barbecue with music, right after the parade, starting, I think, at 12:30. All that information is on their website. There is a fee, but again, we hope that you'll go up and join them. Then on Tuesday, July 3rd, is the city of Oceanside's anniversary. And that's when we do fireworks in the middle of the city. It's right on Rancho Del Oro. You can take the Springer and walk the few yards to where you can see the fireworks right over your head. I've been told there, there are approximately 10 food trucks, live music and several different areas. Bring your chair, again, red, white and blue it up as much as you want. Come have fun. It's gonna be, again, a great fireworks display. They start right at nine o'clock, but please, please, make sure you pay attention to the volunteers. We don't want you to get hurt, so please stay out of where the fallout areas. That means no sneaking behind the scene, okay? All that information, of course, is on the Oceanside Rec website and also the city of Oceanside website. And then July 4th, 4th, we'll end up doing items down at the beach with our extended entertainment and family-friendly events. That's on the 4th. And then, of course, the Harbor will be holding their Yankee Doodle Dinghy Parade. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I left some cards in the back with the whole Independence Week.
How many on 49? Three.
Let's go to 50.
Yes, item number 50 is a request by councilmembers Jerry Kern and Jack Feller to present the findings from the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce Independent Economic Impact Study on the SOAR conducted by Lynn Reeser, PhD of Point Loma Nazarene University.
Okay, I'll open, I'll let Jack close, but Dr. Reeser, please come up and talk about this. You know, this is a very important issue coming before us in Oceanside and I think the public should be informed about exactly what this consequences of this, you know, I, I think a very flawed and terrible initiative, but I will let Dr. Reeser proceed. So go ahead, Dr. Reeser, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Honorable members of the council, staff and the public, we were delighted to be able to look at this study and try to secure as many of the conclusions in an objective manner as possible. Let me, this evening, focus on five key topics. First of all, some of the lessons from other cities that have implemented SOAR, SOAR-like initiatives, the impact on the city's housing goals, the effects on agriculture and agritourism, the implications for jobs in the economy, and finally, the impact on the city's budget. First of all, I think it's important to be clear what the underlying issue is. We've heard quite a bit of discussion about, and rightly so, concerns for preservation of parks, open space. But virtually all of the open space now used for parks or potentially could be used for parks, as you know, is publicly owned, already would require a vote by the people for any change of use and therefore would not be affected by this initiative. We are therefore really talking about the disposition of the 3,340 acres of land that are agriculturally zoned, you can see here, mapped in the northeast part of the city, and in particular, the 2,250 acres of farmland that is now actively grown in various crops. In terms of the experience of other cities that have implemented SOAR, SOAR-type measures, generally, the effects are slower economic growth, higher home prices and reduced housing affordability. Here you can see the experience of Ventura County. In the 20 years prior to SOAR, the county outperformed the state in terms of job growth by 50%. In the last five years, the area's underperformed the state by 50%. Jobs are linked to housing, to the extent that houses are not available, there will not be the workers, and as a result, the jobs will not be able to be filled. We've seen record numbers of companies leaving Ventura County during recent years. Oceanside has a housing crisis, as do most cities in the coastal strip in California. In the last five years, as you can see here, wages have increased at an average annual pace of less than 2.5%, while home prices have escalated at an average of 10% per year. Housing affordability has therefore continued to worsen. The state, as you know, has set a housing goal for the city of Oceanside to create over 5,000 housing units by the year 2021. At this point, we should be about 55% of our way of achieving that goal. We are only at 14% of that target. In the last five years, we have added only about 155 housing units per year. To catch up, we would now have to create more than 1,100 housing units per year. That is clearly not going to happen unless we address some other housing options. Not only do we have a crisis in housing, but agriculture here in Oceanside is being seriously challenged. On the one side, farmers are being squeezed by rising prices of labor and water, and the other side, by climbing imports. And there are really three primary channels that farmers have that they could become sustainable and viable. Unfortunately, SOAR would appear to block each of those channels or paths to survival. First, farmers could invest in major upgrades, but SOAR would appear to prevent that kinds of massive infrastructure by saying that basically you would have to preserve the character of the current situation. Second, farmers could become engaged in developing a major profitable agritourism business, but that would involve significant investment in infrastructure to support lodging, retailing and other parts of a truly viable agritourism cluster. And third, farmers could redeploy some parts of their land to other uses, commercial, residential. But again, that would be prevented from. residential, but again, that would be prevented from the SOAR initiative. So ironically, although SOAR intends to preserve farming, it actually prevents farmers from pursuing a path to make farming sustainable in the city. We looked at three possible alternatives to developing the two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty acres of land that is now currently being farmed. Option one would be what we call restricted use, which is apparently what the SOAR initiative would intend, and that would be, the status quo would continue. That area would continue to be farmed, as it is today, in various crops. Second, we looked at a plan of limited development, where you still would have about seventeen-hundred acres farmed in various crops, but the rest in some agritourism businesses, as well as about a thousand housing units. And a third, what we call moderate development, which would involve about one-third of the total land that is today agriculturally zoned, that would still have over eleven hundred acres grown in various crops, but also have a more robust agritourism business and about two thousand additional housing units. The differences in economic results are really quite striking. Under the current usage, what we call restricted use, you would have about, after fifty years after development started in 2034, some two thousand jobs, whereas you'd have more than four thousand jobs under the moderate development case. Under the restricted use case, you'd have about a hundred and fifty million dollars in terms of gross regional product, whereas that number would be about four hundred thousand, four hundred million dollars under the moderate development case. Those are the opportunity costs that SOAR would bring to this overall area. Also, it's important to look at the overall impact on the city's budget. Again, by 2034, if you look at just the contribution of this agricultural area, you would be seeing a contribution, if the city were to be running a deficit, of another nearly five hundred million dollars to a deficit, whereas a moderate development case, this area would be generating a surplus that would annually run about two and a half million dollars. There also would be a significant contribution to infrastructure badly needed in the city from allowing at least a moderate development. Consider that each housing unit would bring another hundred thousand dollars in infrastructure spending, plus another fifty-two thousand dollars per unit in terms of impact study, impact fees, which includes affordable housing. So in conclusion, although the intent of SOAR is certainly very laudable, and I think anyone would applaud it, and I certainly would, but unfortunately, some policies, some have unintended consequences, and I'm afraid that this, in the case of SOAR, would be true. In particular, the outcome is likely to be very different from that vision by the SOAR Initiative backers. Instead of a picture of flower fields, strawberry fields, and a vibrant agritourism sector, the ultimate outcome would probably, more likely, be an area of a lot of land that to go fallow, or land subdivided into large landed estates sold to wealthy owners. And in summary, SOAR would block a path to sustain agriculture and develop a truly vibrant agritourism business that you've all talked about, to meeting the city's critical housing needs, to generate new jobs and more economic growth, to invest in critical infrastructure, and to fund various community priorities, ranging from more police and fire protection to various community activities, such as, two weeks ago, we heard from many of our citizens for the need for a community pool, to helping to address the city's long-term pension obligations. Thank you very much.
We have five speakers on this item, and I'll call you forward, as Scott Ashton, followed by Christopher Rodriguez, Neil Nagata, Michelle Keeler, and Dennis Martnik.
If you called your name, please come down and line up behind the podiums.
Honorable mayor, councilmembers, my name is Scott Ashton, CEO of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I think what stands out to me the most about the SOAR initiative is the lost opportunities that it creates, opportunities to do something creative and really special in terms of agritourism for our community, and also opportunities to be innovative in the way we address our workforce housing needs. As you saw, the Point Loma Economic Impact Study does not mince words. SOAR will hurt farmers and stop meaningful economic activity and new jobs for Oceanside. To keep our city from becoming a bedroom community for the wealthy, we need to keep investing in business growth, we need to keep adding jobs, and create places where local workers can afford to live. The study shows that the vote on this measure will have real, material consequences for our community. We're talking about forfeiting serious economic opportunities and advancements if the measure passes. Eighteen hundred potential jobs and more than one hundred and fifty million dollars in wages and income could be lost if SOAR becomes law. There is a huge opportunity cost if we allow ourselves to be fooled by the feel-good nature, by the feel-good title of this initiative. My guess is that no one loves Oceanside's farmland more than its farmers, and we need to respect the voices of those families who have farmed here for generations and know what it takes to stay in business. If they're saying that this measure will make it next to impossible for them to keep their farms, and this study backs that up, we need to pay attention to them. A good place to start is by reading this study and the city's own study. I urge voters to take the time to understand what SOAR really means for Oceanside, and I'm confident that you will draw the conclusions that SOAR is not good for our community. For me, these studies and the facts that are present are all I need to decide, and I will be voting no on SOAR. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, councilmembers. My name is Christopher Rodriguez. I am a South Morro Hills resident. I am also a farmer, a small business owner, and a veteran. I currently grow avocados, passion fruit, guava, and recently planted coffee. I'm also in the process of remodeling what I hope to open as a bed and breakfast in the area and boutique event venue, and with the coffee, I would love to roast it. And so what I'm trying to express is, as farmers, and speaking with farmers and meeting with farmers on a regular basis, we want opportunity. We want to be able to have the freedom to do business and to create money for our family. And the SOAR initiative states in its title, "Saving Oceanside Agricultural and Open Space." There is not open space there in South Morro Hills. That is commercial enterprises doing business, providing for their family. That's their private property, it's our private property, and the SOAR initiative is not gonna save agriculture. It's going to put handcuffs on farmers, and it's gonna limit their opportunity. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Michelle Keeler, one of the last commercial farmers out in South Morro Hills. I want to thank you for setting aside time to discuss the findings of this SOAR Initiative impact report. In no mixed terms, it makes clear that the SOAR Initiative does endanger local farming, and it leads to the demise of an agricultural zone. That's not the Oceanside that I want to live in, nor does it preserve or honor agriculture and all that we and other farming families have created in South Morro Hills over the last several decades. I sincerely hope that this doesn't take place. Unfortunately, skepticism and misunderstandings have brought us here, and that's why I'm glad that you're considering the findings of this study. We, as local farmers, do not oppose SOAR because we want to overly develop our land. We oppose SOAR because it's not only bad for current farming, but it does absolutely nothing to preserve agriculture in the future. We're actually focused on a vision plan that focuses on truly preserving agriculture and agritourism, where non-farmers can come out and experience agriculture in a way that helps our economy, it preserves ag land from being developed, and it keeps agriculture viable, as well as making South Morro Hills a really great place to live. In one stroke, SOAR kills this vision. The kind of agritourism that is allowed under SOAR does nothing to preserve farming in South Morro Hills. I urge you and every voter to look at the facts, to really consider this report that was presented, consider SOAR's consequences, and consider the alternatives. Once you do that, I think that you will join local farmers in realizing that SOAR is bad for agriculture. Thank you for your time and efforts on this, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Hello. Honorable mayor and city councilmembers, I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts with you today. I am Neil Nagata, a third-generation farmer and third-generation Oceanside resident. At your last meeting, the city's results on the impact report on SOAR initiative were presented. The research made it very clear that what the measure will do is very different from what the backers say it will do. While SOAR is branded as a pro-farming movement, your report clearly showed that by restricting farmers' property rights, devaluing land, the measure will likely end the farming in Oceanside. It only secures large estate homes for the wealthy and not farmland. And today, we're hearing about a separate independent economic study done by a respected economist from Point Loma University that came to the very same, if not even more alarming conclusion. Just one paragraph from the study will summarize my concerns for this measure. As a longtime farmer in this community, I quote, "While the intent of SOAR, the SOAR Initiative, is to protect agriculture in the City of Oceanside, it actually is likely to lead to the demise. It will block three channels of the farmers that could otherwise pursue to keep their operations viable." And that was presented by Dr. As a farmer, I can attest to these legitimate worries. If we cannot make long-term infrastructure investments to support agriculture, such as a recycled water line, and I cannot secure ongoing financing because of property devaluation, and cannot innovate by using some of our property to create new economic opportunities, then tell me how to keep our farms alive here in Oceanside. Now that we have the facts about this measure and its disastrous consequences it will have for our community, it's time to state clearly and directly, not only vote on SOAR, the only vote on SOAR is no. On this paper up ahead is a quote out of CDFA information, and you can see by 2010 to 2015, we lost forty-two hundred farms in California, and farmers lost ninety-seven, nine-point-seven billion dollars. And so anybody that says that farmers aren't trying hard and working hard, we really are, but the economics are just very tough. Thank you.
My name is Dennis Martnik. I'm president of Morro Hills, also a farmer. I raise my academia nuts, also citrus that I donate to food banks. The essence of economics is supposed to be common sense, and what you heard tonight is nonsense. The Reeser Report makes conclusions based on assumptions that aren't stated. The assumptions that are stated are wrong, and it leads to conclusions that's completely not what SOAR is about. The reason we did SOAR to begin with is because we don't trust the city council. We saw what you did with the integral project. You encouraged them to move forward when it was very obvious, your planning commission voted six to zero against it, your staff recommended against it, your chamber of commerce recommended against it, and you decided to go ahead and encourage them to move forward. The reason you're finding agriculture demising in California is because of the kind of development that you're proposing here in Oceanside, high-density residential. The last report that you saw two weeks ago was reasonable in that at least it stated its assumptions, and it also made conclusions with hedges. Some of the hedges, for example, "It is not possible to quantify the probability of land use changes under either SOAR or existing policy conditions." Another one, "It should be further noted that TNDG, the studiers, has not evaluated the feasibility, from a landowner or developer's perspective, of residential and/or industrial development in existing agricultural areas." The proposal last time showed that SOAR would have minimal impact, and that was not including consideration of the positive fiscal impact it would have through ag tourism, which SOAR promotes, it encourages, okay? SOAR doesn't do anything to the general plan except ask, provides, requires that voters get a chance, and they get a say. When you're proposing general plan amendments to open space and agricultural areas, we know the difference between open space and agriculture, SOAR would apply to both, okay? What was presented tonight, again, is a distortion of what SOAR is it about. The wrong assumptions, okay? SOAR has nothing to do with placing limits on agriculture that aren't already there under the existing general plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, yes. Mr. Martnik, I agree. This presentation that we just got is seriously flawed. First of all, it's not, it is, it has a very strong bias. It was put together, actually requested by the Chamber of Commerce. I am a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and I asked the executive director, and with all due respect, that we should have two sides of the issue on SOAR presented to the membership before making a decision. The executive director refused to allow SOAR to do a presentation. It was definitely on a one-sided track. So the membership of the Chamber of Commerce did not get to hear from the SOAR proponents, did not. And I feel that that was, you know, as a member, I feel that that was a very serious, serious flaw, and going forward, it is something that is really gonna address the credibility of the Chamber of Commerce, and I feel very badly about that. But the bottom line is, that is seriously flawed because of the premise that the city has included agricultural zones to satisfy state mandated housing goals. In fact, it has never, the city has never included our ag lands, which have no water hookups, no sewer hookups, no infrastructure improvements, no services. It would be extremely, extremely, almost impossible to provide housing for workforce, especially for workforce housing there, because it would be a huge cost to Oceanside taxpayers and ratepayers. Either we're gonna have to cut all other services and our levels are gonna go down, or somehow the citizens of Oceanside are gonna have to somehow subsidize that kind of development. We have never, ever encouraged residential housing. It has never, ever, ever been part of our plans to satisfy our housing goals. Our requirements have always been able to be met by our plans. Our plans submitted to the state have always been accepted by the state. We do not have to include, try to have police departments, fire departments, parks, all of that, build all those, and as you know, it's very, very expensive, or even, I mean, we've had trouble just getting approval of a swimming pool. This, this report is seriously flawed. I, I fully, fully support SOAR going forward. I am asking the citizens of Oceanside to, yes, please vote for SOAR. It will be on the November ballot. It will be something that'll be, in fact, support the economic viability of the City of Oceanside. Thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
Well, it's a little disingenuous for Mr. Martnik to get up here. He has two and a half acres, and calls himself a farmer, when the stuff he grows on his farm, on his lot, he just gives away. He's not a farmer. He's a wealthy landowner who wants to keep wealthy landowners in business in Oceanside. The idea that does nothing for farming. So I have a couple of questions. So Dr. Reeser, can you make your way back? Well, it's a little disingenuous for Mr. Martinick to get up here. He has two and a half acres, and calls himself a farmer when he, the stuff he grows on his farm, on his lot, he just gives away. He's not a farmer. He's a wealthy landowner who wants to keep wealthy landowners in business in Oceanside. The idea that it does nothing for farming. So, I have a couple of questions. So, Dr. Reiser, can you make your way back up to the podium? I'd like to, there's a couple of things I'd like to discuss, and then we can move on. So, the city study took a look at the housing through the lens of Oceanside's job-to-housing ratio, just within the confines of the city. And it comes to a much different conclusion than your study. How do you evaluate the city's housing supply, and how do you differ from the other study, and what conclusion do you come to?
Well, first of all, in terms of the housing numbers, we looked at all of the, we started out with the objective that the state target has set for the city. We looked at housing permits that are recorded as part of the stipulation that you actually show in terms of compliance with those goals. We also looked at the housing stock, which is not rising even as fast as permits, because now all those permits are actually completed, and also, you have the demolition of the existing stock. And also, in terms of the jobs, housing ratio, we show many more jobs actually being created than housing units. So, our analysis would indicate that, in fact, you would be creating twice as many jobs as housing units, so that would improve your jobs to housing unit. And also, finally, in contrast to the city study, we include some of the jobs that are, all the active-duty jobs that are involved in the city of Oceanside and housed here, because we do count those active-duty employees. As a footnote, if you include all those employees, the city of Oceanside has about 70,000 employees versus the some 46,000 that was quoted in the study that was presented two weeks ago.
So, did your study, the city's study, include the employment of Oceanside residents at Camp Pendleton?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Can you walk us through how this measure will result in more high-dollar, large home lots at the expense of Oceanside farmland? Because that seems like where it's headed.
Under the current law, as you all know, the area is zoned for agriculture, which means that you can have homes in the area that are size two and a half acres per dwelling unit. And so, you do have already significant housing in that area. And the outcome, give you the comments you've heard from the farmers here, if you look at the numbers, agriculture is generally not profitable, it is losing money, it is hemorrhaging, it is in its own crisis. And the way out will ultimately be, in some cases, you will actually see bankruptcies being filed, or land letting go fallow, or the most likely exit path for many farmers will be just to sell their land to wealthy investors or wealthy owners, who then will be using that space to have large estates with those acreages, at least two and a half acres per home. So, that will actually add to the strains on the existing infrastructure with not the economies of scale that you would be seeing with significant infrastructure that would take place with the kinds of investments that you would have with somewhat larger development.
Thank you.
And then, that would, just to further answer your question, that would increase your income and wealth inequality, because what you would be seeing is basically the northeast part of the city of Oceanside populated primarily by wealthy homeowners, whereas much of the rest of the city would be middle-income, lower-income households.
Thank you. The bottom line is, you know, no other of the real farmers came here to speak against it, all the, I mean, speak for it. All the real farmers spoke against this tonight. And the idea, if you want to save farming in Oceanside, you will vote no on this initiative. So, that's all I have to say. I'll let Councilmember Feller close, since he and I brought this forward.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have a couple of questions also, but I'm, based upon what we're learning about this, this, the, if the SOAR initiative passes, we'll be saving chunks of land for people who have the money, who can afford a house that's 15 or 20 miles away from the central part of the city, and they will be contributing to sprawl, because they have houses that are far away, that need roads that go to them. They're talking about, I've read the proposal, and it would stop infrastructure development, which would improve the roads, and perhaps bring businesses in there, so they don't have to drive all the way over to downtown Oceanside to buy a beer at a brew pub. So, I think the idea of limiting what can happen there will definitely impact the agritourism that we spent a couple of years working on, and I think that's a really great concept that we have. My intent is to make a decision based upon information, rather than making a decision on, wow, we've got to do this, or yeah, let's do that, or yahoo. So, I think that what we're doing right now is exploring the information. I thought it was pretty interesting that people stated that the Chamber of Commerce was opposed to this, when we've had the director of the chamber come here and say that he, they only said they would like us to take our time and evaluate what's going on. He didn't say yes or no about anything. Currently, today, he said he's opposing the SOAR initiative, and that the chamber has to vote on that as a group. It's not just one person coming in and shooting from the hip. So, I have a question about, what would the likely outcome of the proposed measure be in terms of Oceanside farmland? You just, we looked at the flyer that one of the farmers brought up, that showed that anything on farming is a negative impact right now, that they're really challenged to just stay in business. But why would SOAR impact their businesses, according to what you've researched?
As I said, basically, there is these three channels for survival now, and one would be to invest in significant upgrades, as you heard from Mr. Nagata, for instance, to upgrade the recycled water systems. That would require significant infrastructure spending. That path would be foreclosed. Second would be to develop a truly vibrant agritourism business. SOAR would appear to, as we've heard last week, as the tier-one type of activities, which would be very limited, essentially a farm stand, that is not really the kind of viable agritourism business that would make farming profitable. You would be wanting to look at more robust coffee operations, wineries, lodging, retailing, and that would entail infrastructure spending. That would not be accommodated by SOAR. And the third would be, you could keep farming part of your territory, but part of your land, but you also would be looking at ways to perhaps develop part of it into some housing, some commercial activities. So, our more other agribusiness areas. So, all those channels for sustainability of agriculture seem to be blocked at every intersection by SOAR, which is, again, the irony of the SOAR initiative. And again, I came at it from, you know, I think SOAR, the intent is so very laudable, but then you look at the actual consequences, and instead of helping agriculture survive, helping develop the agritourism cluster that you envision, you essentially would be blocking all of those paths towards success.
So, the city, currently, we are spending money and a lot of time studying what recycling water does, and agricultural areas need highly purified recycled water to, if they're going to use it on crops. So, what you're saying is, we can't get that water out there, even though we can produce it in an unlimited way, because we have more water than we need, and we have to throw it out into the ocean?
Correct.
So, we, if we want to move our recycled purified water out to Morro Hills, so the farmers can use that, we won't be able to do that if SOAR passes, because it blocks infrastructure improvements?
That would appear to be the case. And if, and if you look at, in terms of, again, what Mr. Nagata said, in terms of getting, for instance, the private capital to finance such an infrastructure, you are looking for, and I worked most of my career in the banking sector, and essentially, if you're making approval for a loan from the credit department, if there's a question about the legality of such investments, or the appreciation of the collateral, the answer is going to be, no, you're not going to be financing it.
So, the report that we had, that the city staff reported to us a couple of weeks ago, the 9212 report, had a similar objective as yours, to analyze what the impacts of this initiative would be if they were passed. But it appears that you used differing methodology and assumptions than what the city did. The city staff approaches it from very much, what is it that we have to do? What will the impact be upon our fiscal budget? And would they, they came up with a result that said that we would have less money in the city coffers, and I'm wondering how you came up with that negative number that you had on one of your graphs, and how SOAR will segregate our community by wealth, so only the wealthy people will be able to live in that area. Is that part of what you were explaining to us? And how did you get to that same conclusion the staff did?
Well, first of all, as you heard just at the last public speaker here, the study that the city had done was much more of a theoretical study. It did not actually look and ask what was feasible in this area. They did not interview landowners or developers. We did, and so, we modeled what actually seemed to be practical and feasible. Second, we looked at a more comprehensive view of the multiplier ripple effects throughout the economy. We use much more complex econometric models to capture all those different indirect and direct effects. And third, in terms of the fiscal impact, we modeled specifically the agricultural area to look at the net impact of it would be running a deficit or a surplus in the final year, and we modeled it actually in current dollars, is to be in synchronization with the way you do your outlook in terms of forecasting. So, that is how we came up with the results. But you also are correct, that the study that the city had done, and ours, both showed that there would be a significant opportunity cost lost if SOAR were to be passed in terms of jobs and potential net revenue for the city's fiscal standing.
So, that makes sense. So, it's, it seems apparent, or maybe even obvious, that we can either listen to the slogans of the promoters, as I started to say at the beginning, or we can listen to the facts, which you're presenting us, and which we were presented with a couple of weeks ago, to make informed decisions when we go to vote on this item. And as an Oceanside resident, I'm going to do as much homework as I can. I'm not going to believe the "save our open space" slogan, which there is no open space to save, and save our parks, and the parks are already private property, no one's wanting to do anything with the parks.
Probably, yes.
So, I think that's what we have to deal with, and everyone has to make their decision with education, not slogans. So, thank you for explaining that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Feller.
No, I want to get to the public hearings.
So, I thank you for your time. You can, you can rest easy now. I'm just going to make a couple of statements, because I read your report, and I'm very impressed with it. The one that kind of stuck was the initiative would prevent the creation of, would prevent the creation of a viable agritourism industry, because there will be significant infrastructure required. In reality, the, I think the, the people that would like to develop their farm after, if this were to somehow pass, would, would be faced with elections of our $45,000, $750,000 to change the use on their land. And in here, it says, in reality, given the historical failure of such ballot measures to be approved, no one's going to take the risk on, on any kind of new development. So, the key, I think, is probably infrastructure. You have, you've stated over and over that economically, it's, it's a big risk. I would say to the voters, the big question is, who's going to pay for all this infrastructure if, if it was successful? Based on, on two and a half acre lots or more, housing of that size is not going to be on septic. And this, and the whole community can't go on septic in Morro Hills. So, if, if they're going to cut off what the farmers actually want to do, I think the, the thing that we're probably mostly concerned with is the, the farmers going out of business, just because they can't, and, and, you know, there's, somebody's going to have to pay for that infrastructure, and it's probably not going to be the city in this case. My last statement in closing is that I think this is a taking of personal property rights with no negotiation. It was drawn up as saving parks, as we heard, and, I mean, I know both the mayor and I heard it in, as they were gathering signatures, don't you want to save our parks, and don't you want to save our open space in, in our farmland? But, bottom line, this, this is a no-growth slam dunk. I mean, you can, you can be promised, this is no opportunity for farmers who are truly farmers going forward. So, with that, I'll bring it to a close. Thank you.